Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Councilmember Brian Armstrong. Today we're talking about both our October 7th and the October 21st City Council meeting. Thanks for coming into the studio today.
It's good to be here again.
This is your second appearance, right?
Yep, round two.
Well, we must have been okay last time because you came back for a second show. So that's good.
You did a good job of making me look good.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming in today and we're just coming off. I mean, kind of getting our cool weather now. It's starting to feel a lot more like fall and Halloween's almost here. We had a big event this past weekend at Sand Creek Park for families and children. Rocky's Pumpkin Patch.
Yep, it was a huge event and it went great. We had 1,500 pumpkins and they all disappeared. So hopefully that means we had 1,500 plus kids coming through. But yeah, there was all different, all different types of events and things going on there. More than enough candy to go around between police, fire, EMT, the different groups that were out there from youth hockey to school, high school things. We actually, I actually had the opportunity with my wife to work with six volunteers from the Coon Rapids High School. And these girls were running circles around me. They were, they were just impressive. I'm, I love the volunteerism that was going on out there and the event was a huge, huge success.
Yeah, in fact, it was a record turnout. Thousands of people were out there. I mean, we had a perfect day. The weather, the weather was great and always funny to see all the different, or fun to see all the different costumes that there are. There was a costume contest. So if you, if you weren't able to get out there or don't know, I'd check it out next year because it's grown over the last, I don't know if we've done it five years now, but several years now. And it's grown and it is just a fun day for families. And it's free. I mean, that's the best part.
Yeah, I forgot to mention the little girl that won the 70 or 75 pound pumpkin. I think she weighed like about 35 pounds.
Oh, they got drawn for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. She, the pumpkin was about as big as she was.
That's awesome. All right, well, that was fun. We'll move into city business now and more fun topics to talk about here. Let's first talk about our Tuesday, October 21st City Council meeting. One of the first items we wanted to talk about there was the approval of a memorandum of understanding with Anoka County. This is for the installation and use of Flock safety cameras on county-owned traffic control signal systems. Can you explain what this is all about?
Yep, yep. The Flock systems, you'll hear them reference LPR. That's license plate readers. We've got that program going over in Riverdale that's helped significantly reduce crime and, and pre, if you want to call it pre-crime.
Yeah, the retail theft.
Yeah, because of the cameras there. We're looking at the expanding that program and some of the cameras where we want to put them are going to be on county street lights. So, all right, signal control lights. So we needed to get together with the county and get the approval to have those set up there.
Okay, obviously a big destination attraction there up in Riverdale, especially the busy hobby, busy holiday shopping season.
Yep, yep.
Those will eventually be going up.
Yep.
All right, council held a public hearing and no one spoke on this, but adopted an ordinance and resolution establishing fees for 2026. We've kind of gone to this, there used to be a lot of separate actions for different fee approvals. It's all kind of now in one resolution. And want to talk about here, a lot of things staying the same, but specifically water. We want to talk about water is going up next year, right?
Yep, yep. Water is going up slightly, sewer is going up slightly. Again, it did all kind of boils down to inflation, cost of living, et cetera, that, that, that we're, we're all kind of dealing with. But we're, we're doing everything we can on, from the city angle to keep that impact as low as possible. Thankfully, we're lower than a lot of the cities around us. So it's trending in the right direction to try to keep up with the infrastructure. You've probably seen a lot of work on the sewer systems and the water towers and et cetera. They were starting to age out and needed to be, needed to be taken care of. So we've all got to kind of pitch in together and help take care of it.
Yeah, and this was part of a study that was done, I think was, I don't know if Ellers did it or one of the places did it several years back, but they studied what, what rates were needed into the future, probably a good five, seven years. I think they projected out for some of those enhancements, the improvements, any of the repairs.
Yep.
So we're kind of just in that plan now and implementing those increases each year. So again, water went up about 8%, sewer 5%, stormwater 5%. These are effective January 1st. So the first bills that folks will see them on will be the bill that comes out in May of 2026.
Correct.
If you get that quarter in. It's about, I think they said the average increase is about $46 for the year. So just a little less than $4 a month with that increase.
Yep, yep. But hopefully it improves the water quality and improves the, we've seen in the past years that, oh, there's a water main break here. There's something, you know, that, so again, just being proactive and trying to take care of all of this in a, in a strategic plan to where it, it doesn't feel as, as bad, so to speak, as you're going along because it's done in stages versus just throwing it all on the public.
Doing it a couple of years and then suddenly, suddenly doing it. But yeah, the infrastructure upgrades, all that are necessary. And it is one of those things. You turn on the faucet, you expect the water, you know, it's one of those things you don't really think about until it's not there. So important to have that.
Yep.
All right, council, let's move forward. We're going to talk about a letter of engagement for the West Water Treatment Plant. This is for a reclaimed pump installation?
Yep, yep, that's correct. And, and this was, this was kind of planned for as well. But long, long story short, basically what it is, is the, one of the, one of the wells in the city here has a, has a filtration system that the, the, the pump that handles it kind of sits on the bottom of the well and you've got a lot of sediment and et cetera down there. So when this is doing its job, it's picking up sediment and debris and whatever else. And obviously it has to be filtered out, costs money, et cetera, et cetera. So we're putting in a, we're putting in a new floating system so that it doesn't have to deal with that sediment anymore. Improves water quality for the, the people of the city of Coon Rapids. And it's a, it's a good investment that, that benefits everybody.
All right, sounds like a good idea. Council adopted an ordinance rezoning to Low Density Residential 3. This is the old Fire Station 3 property off of 113th Avenue. I know this was previously industrial, but, but that fire station obviously moved. It's been, I had to look back. It wasn't this January, it was already the January before.
Yep.
They've been there more than a year and a half now, but this site is going to become housing.
Yep, yep. We're in the process of working with a builder to look at putting in eight single-family homes in that area. And because it used to be old Fire Station 3, it had to be rezoned so that it could be used for residential, for the residential properties. That's thus the rezoning, et cetera. But from, from the site plans that we've seen, they may not be the final plans, but it looks like it's going to be a very, very good use of the, the property. Coon Rapids is, is getting a little, about 99% built out for residential areas. So this is a smart use of the, the property and it looks like it's going to be a really good or fantastic program, so.
Yeah, so you just have these small infill areas to deal with. And this is actually a new zoning classification that was just approved within the last year, right?
You are correct, yep.
So this is our, will be kind of the first use for it at, at this point.
Yep, yep.
All right. And then council also introduced an ordinance authorizing the sale of real estate. So the sale of the actual fire station site, right?
Yeah, yeah. Between, between the last council, or the council meeting on the 7th and this one here, there was a lot of moving parts that needed to be taken care of to cover all the regulations, ordinances, et cetera. So, yeah.
And we'll have another one on our next meeting because that's an intro. So that will have to, to come back as an actual resolution or ordinance. So that'll be at our meeting in November, one of our meetings there. And then eventually they'll look at the plan for the actual housing on the sites, correct?
Correct.
Because as I understand it, there may be going to be four that face 113 and then maybe four that face that neighborhood just to the north.
Yep.
Okay, so more to come on that. All right, council approved contracts for 2025, 2026. This is ICE Center user contracts.
Correct, yeah. The, the two big pieces of it were the Blue Ox Hockey Team and the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association. Again, kind of the same thing with, with different costs and keep the upkeep of the, the facility and whatever else. There was a small tweak to that, but contracts were all, are all looking good and we're looking forward to seeing the Blue Ox back there again. And also we love our hockey, youth hockey association as well, so.
Yeah, hockey season is here, so just in time. And like you said, this is more of a housekeeping item. I know they look at other comparables to other cities to see what they're charging and you want to, you want to kind of keep up and, but don't want to be over the top.
Does hockey season end?
Probably not. I just look at it as like, I'm thinking NHL season, but I assume that's why they do 25, 26.
There's, there's, there's kids skating there all the time. It's like, wow.
Yep, yep. All right, moving forward, council introduced an ordinance authorizing the sale of real estate, which we already talked about.
Yep.
The fire station stage, so we'll, we'll go over that one. Council adopted a resolution amending the recycling fund budget for an HVAC system replacement. And this sounds like it's something important to do maybe before winter.
Yes, exactly right. It, again, the, the funds were available for the, basically clean and hurt whole team over there that if you haven't been through the recycling center, I mean, it is, it is a well-oiled machine and it's a nice, clean facility, but they like to be warm in the wintertime.
Yeah.
So we're, we're basically doing an upgrade for them so that they can, they can work efficiently through the wintertime.
All right, that's important. So get that one done pretty quick. I was actually just over this afternoon taking some photos there and like, it's amazing how much stuff really that you can recycle there. And the new odds and ends trailer that they've had that's been there, I think about a year now or almost a year. But there's so many different things in that, different boxes for things you can bring in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Every time, every time I go over and drop something, I was like, oh, they take this now, they take that now. And yeah, yeah. And I mean, it, you know, I don't, depending on who you are, you might go, are recycling? It's, it's just stuff you do and whatever else. The way, the way they've got that set up over there, I mean, we'll, we'll talk about it a little later as well. But I mean, we've got, we've got people coming in from outside the city all to utilize that facility and they've done such a great job of, of building that up that we actually get funds from the county that comes from the state and whatever else to help us keep the, keep that running the way it is and continual improvements.
Yep, that's awesome. The big one this time of year is if you didn't know, you can do candy wrappers, like the ones that you get for Halloween time. So they have a, a box out there. You can't put this in your normal recycling, but they find markets for these things. So that's why you can bring them there. So you can recycle your candy wrapper. So keep that in mind as Halloween approaches and then of course pumpkins can go in organics.
Yep.
So you can, once your pumpkin's done after Halloween, you can bring it to the recycling center.
You taught me something more again.
All right, we got an excuse to go eat candy now, right? All right, council introduced an ordinance, another one here, amending section 5-2003. This relates to lawful gambling, the trade area definition. And it sounds like we want to just basically add a new community to the trade area.
Yep, yep. We were, we're looking at adding the city of Dayton and, and again, if you look at a map, gee, Dayton isn't really connected to Coon Rapids. But, but basically what it is, is we've got some charitable, charitable gambling organizations in, inside the city here. In this particular case, the Lions Club. There, there's a, there's a veterans organization in the city of Dayton that they want to help support and due to city ordinances and whatever else, we have to go through this process to make sure everything's transparent above board so that it can be done properly. And that's what this whole, that's what this whole introduction was about.
All right, so that will come back at a meeting for formal adoption in November as well.
Yep.
That is all we have from our October 21st meeting. We'll jump back to our first meeting of the month, which happened on October 7th. We had a fun one to start off that meeting, a proclamation honoring the 50th anniversary of the Coon Rapids Senior Center.
50 years. Yeah, I, I learned a lot about that that I did not know. They, they actually started off in a church, then they moved to a fire station, then they moved to the family services center and now they're over at, at City Hall in the, in the community, the community area.
Yep.
The, again, getting back to the volunteerism in the city here, these people are phenomenal what they, what they do. And, and just, just the, the way they've continued to build and build that program is just, kudos to them.
Yeah, it's so busy. You go over there any day of the week and they have something going on. So if you've never checked it out, head over there and they got a lot of events going on. And in the case over there, they actually have a big, they had this thing for, with pitchers, but I think it said 50 years or something, but then there's pitchers incorporated into the numbers and the years. It's like a huge thing in the display case. So if you come to the civic center, check it out, but there's a lot of old photos, you know, with memories and, and stuff on there, so.
Yeah, and some, I believe it, I mean, it's, it's already been this year, but a few months back, they, they always have where they have their craft and, and treat sales and whatever else.
It's coming up.
Was it really?
Yeah, the 13th, I believe November 13th. Let me, let me look at my.
I was going to say.
It's the Thursday, the 13th, I believe, yes.
I was going to say, if you want some of the, the old, the old school homemade baked goods and whatever else.
Yes.
Again, a few pounds.
Speaking of candy and wrappers and other stuff.
Yep.
No, Thursday, November 13th. So mark it on your calendar. It's usually from nine to three in the civic center, open to the community, but it's their annual craft sale. They raise money there, bake sale, all of that. The Senior Bazaar.
Yep, there we go, Senior Bazaar.
That's what it is. All right, moving forward, council accepted an easement agreement for the Foley Monopole. We wanted to bring this up because the temporary one's been up for a while. The old water tower had come down by the McDonald's there, but they're going to soon be putting up the permanent monopole, the antenna tower, basically.
Yep, yep. Yeah, and you informed me again that it was, they were looking at starting on that time.
Today, when we're recording this.
Yeah, and then it got, then it got moved back. We don't have a new date on that as of yet, but hopefully that should be up in the next couple of months and back up and running again.
Yeah.
But I still have, I still have people email me or Facebook me and say, hey, what happened to the water tower? It's like.
It's gone.
Been gone a while.
Right.
Little bit of a different landscape to the, to the, to, yeah, different landscape.
We had some cool video of it coming down when they cut the thing and took it down. And the other thing I learned about that, speaking of learning things, we talked about that apparently only at this point AT&amp;T is the antenna that's on that tower. So none of the other cell providers, I mean, I think they're going to look into offering them space on that or whatever. But if you're having issues, I was having issues on T-Mobile in that area. So I don't, I just assumed that it was maybe because of this, but apparently they don't have an antenna on there. So I was informed, the best thing to do is to, I won't say complain, but let your wireless provider know that you're having problems in certain areas.
Yep.
Because that's the only way they find out. And then that's sometimes when new antennas will, will be put up in areas. Because we all know you're driving, sometimes there's dead spots. But yeah, I was literally in that parking lot of McDonald's and could not do anything. And I'm sitting here, there's an antenna tower right here.
You're always looking, looking out for your, for fellow citizens.
Yeah, so I don't know. So anyways, that's, that's a tip that I learned this week. So if you're having problems, let, let your wireless carrier.
Don't call your council.
Don't call, don't, don't call Brian. Call the wireless carrier.
Yeah.
All right, council approved the 2026 SCORE Recycling and Non-Resident Use Agreements and accepted a resolution accepting funds with Anoka County. This is what you were alluding to when we were talking about recycling.
Yep, yep, correct. It, there's, there's funds available through the state which make it available to the county, which turns, in turn gives it to the city of Coon Rapids to, again, help with the recycling programs and also again, because of the, the people that come from out of the city of Coon Rapids. I don't know, I don't know if my number's exact, but I believe roughly 20, 25% of the recycling product that comes in is from people outside the city of Coon Rapids. So we get additional funds to, to help cover that, but at the same time it helps build the program.
Yeah.
And, and add new options and whatever else. So it's a, it's a, it's a great, great program and it just kind of also shows what a great job they're doing over there, that this continues to come in every year. It's a, again, you kind of scratch your head and go, you're talking recycling, but it's one of the cleanest, most well-organized places. I've been to other ones and they don't hold the candle to Coon Rapids.
But this is some of why they can do, like you said, what they could, I've always kind of wondered that, why we have other, they let people from outside. But like you said, we're getting some funding back for it and it lets us grow the program for things like the odds and ends trailer, or they've also added the reuse room in recent years. Where I was in there today and there's stuff, there's puzzles in there, there's books, there's paint, so things you can actually go in and, and look for and rather than it getting thrown away, someone else can, and take it and reuse it.
Yep, who would, who would have thought that if you had some spare time that you'd wanted to do something different, go wander through the recycle center?
Exactly. If you're bored someday, it's always a good, I think it said limited five items was on there.
If you're bored, pick up a board key.
Yeah, yeah, grab a puzzle. All right, council adopted a resolution accepting a 2025 statewide health improvement program grant and approved an agreement with Anoka County. We're doing a campaign here now called Happy Trails.
Yep.
Let's talk a little bit about that.
Another, another rocky.
With Rocky.
Yeah, another rocky campaign. Basically, the, the funds have to be specifically used to help with, focus on health improvement, et cetera. So what, what we're doing this time around, as you mentioned, is the Happy Trails Park Program. It's, it's funds to, to not only make people aware of the, the trail systems that we have and the different options you have to get out and walk or bike or whatever, get some fresh air. So that's where we're focusing those funds on this year to get people to get out and get active and get healthy.
All right, I'm trying to find this item on here because I'm too far down. It was item seven, but, but how much money did we get for this? Was it about a thousand, a couple, $3,000 it looks like grant money from the ship program, but the money is going to be used to pay for this Happy Trails campaign. It's a program designed to educate people in the community about the importance of slowing down on park trails and watching out for others. Funds will be used for new signs, marketing items and associated community prizes for participation in the campaign. So if you've gone on some of the trails, I know I saw some signs up on one over on E grit just the other day, but, but watch for these. There's also a pledge online that folks, we're going to start promoting this more.
You are correct.
But they're wanting people to take this pledge to, to slow, you know, on the trails, watch for others and there, and there's going to be some prizes. So you can find out more about that on the city's website at coonrapidsmn.gov.
Yep, yep. And when, speaking of the slowdown, et cetera, we all love our e-bikes. I've got, I've got, I've got an e-bike too, where I don't have to pedal when I don't want to, but yeah, we.
You still share the trails with others, right?
So, yeah, you share the trails with, with people pushing strollers and people walking and whatever else, so.
All right, so you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months here. Council adopted a resolution amending the 2025 fee schedule. This adds a registration fee for cannabis businesses. There's been a lot of talk in recent months about that. We haven't seen one open quite yet, but I think one is coming.
Yep, yeah, there was, there was some changes that were done at the state as to how things were going to be handled. And when the new rules came out, they basically pushed it to the cities that were required for getting, getting these businesses registered and going through all the paperwork process. And of course that costs money.
Yeah.
Costs the city administrative fees and whatever else. So that's just being passed on to the, the businesses that are starting this up to, to cover the costs.
Yeah, so just like liquor license fees, that sort of a thing, similar thing.
Yep, yep. And I mean, hopefully, hopefully we don't see too many more of the, the changes or the rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, the rule changes, but we're kind of fluid at this point and we're, we're working with it as, as, as best we can at the least cost possible to the, to the business owners because we love our business owners.
Yeah, all right. Council approved a memorandum of understanding with the Anoka and up in school district. This is for school resource and prevention program officer services. There was a lot of talk about this the previous year, but when folks came back to school a year, we've had the, the prevention officers have been in the school since the start of this school year.
Yep.
From the previous school year.
Yep, and, and they do a, they do a fantastic job. I mean, the, the relationship building that they do with the kids as well as the, the school staff, it's a, it's a, it's a great resource and I, I don't, I can't think of anybody that would, would not want, want this program to continue because you go to the, you go to the high school football games or you go to different events inside the city and you watch these kids come up to the, to the officers all the time and are talking to them because they have built that relationship inside the school. And it's, it's just a great, great thing to see and it just, from the, from the student standpoint, again, for, from a safety standpoint, it just, it just, it's a great program. It really is. And I'm glad to, I'm glad to see it kind of went off without a hitch this year and the, the contract was, you know, pretty much one and done.
Yeah, so basically we have resource officers at Coon Rapids High School, Coon Rapids Middle School, Northdale Middle School, the River Trail Learning Center and also the compass programs. So it, this is agreement with, on those, but also it continues the DARE program, which has been, you know, very successful in our schools. That's been going on since 1974. So continues the DARE education, it's usually in elementary schools.
Yep.
Fifth grade, I believe, so.
Yep, yep. And yeah, and that's a, that's a, Pat Carlson, our councilman at large, it's, it's funny that they're all, now they're grown adults.
Yep.
Coming up to them and, hey, I was in your DARE program.
Yes.
Like, yes, you were, but they were, but they remember him.
It's 1974, so it's been a while.
Yep.
All right, council adopted a resolution accepting grant funds for the Coon, from the Coon Creek watershed district and approving a water quality cost share agreement. What body of water is this?
This is, this is along the Woodcrest Creek channel. And, and yeah, basically what it is, is there, as the environment changes and different weather patterns, et cetera, we had some soil erosion and we had some, some landscaping that needed to, to be redone because it was starting to affect the, not only the wetlands, but the, the, the stormwater runoff downflow. So this is, this is something that needed to be done before it got worse. And it's just general maintenance and upkeep that, that needs to be done for the stormwater runoff system.
All right, council also adopted a resolution terminating participation in the North Metro Regional Street Maintenance Joint Powers Agreement. This is something we've talked about many years. It kind of kept growing over those years, but it sounded like maybe it got a little too large.
Yeah.
And now we're kind of pulling out of it.
Yeah, and Coon Rapids was kind of the, the main city that had been heading this up for the entire time it was, it was in process. And again, it's, it's ongoing. The other cities are going to continue to handle it and maintain it themselves. But as, as city staff and council looked at the direction it was going and the programs that we already have in place on, on our side of things, it, kudos to the, to staff to, for, for looking at it and saying, you know what, this is probably something we need to step away from at this point. We've got our own programs and we can do it cost effectively. And so the program's going to continue for the other cities. We're just going to kind of go it alone.
Yeah, because there was also administrative costs and we did some of the administration and legwork with that as well.
Correct, yep.
All right, that's all we had for our meeting items. Want to talk about construction a little bit. a little bit. We just got maybe about two minutes left, less than that. But Highway 10, if folks don't know, has been kind of a mess, but we're excited for the third lane here. Hopefully within the next couple of weeks, that opens up and the ramps kind of open back up. That's been a thing. And then the other thing we have on the Boulevard going on, if folks have seen, is the big pedestrian bridge. They've built the ramps, but the actual bridge that crosses the Boulevard is going to be going in next week, right?
Yep, next Wednesday, Thursday, there, there's going to be, the road's going to be closed there to, to get that finalized. And if I could, on, on Highway 10, appreciate your patience, but you're going to love it when it's done. It's, it's going to, it is going to free up congestion big time. I, I use that very, very frequently. So I feel your pain and whatever else.
Short-term pain for long-term gain.
Yes, it needed to, it, it needed to be done and better sooner than later. So.
All right. So that bridge, if you're interested, and the closures we're talking about there are going to happen the nights of Wednesday, October 29th overnight, and then again on Thursday, October 30th overnight, from about 7:00 PM until about 5:00 or 6:00 AM, I think. They're shutting it down. So it'll be back open the next day, then they'll do the next one. But they're going to set the one side the one night, the other. So that, that project is making progress.
Yeah, they've done, they've done a great job of keeping traffic flowing through there and whatever else. But sooner or later, you need to put, you need to put those over.
The verge of grass.
Yep.
We are out of time. Thanks for being here today and talking to us.
All right.
Thank you at home for watching. We'll see you back here again after our two meetings in November.